The goals of the feasibility study were to look at the abandoned railroad beds that we have in Tewksbury. And you can see that they're the dotted orange line on that map, which is sort of an inverted Y, if you will. And we wanted to see what it would be like to construct a multi-use trail connecting the center of town with green spaces and potentially to neighboring towns. And we wanted to identify key implementation activities or phased implementation plan, which is including this study. That's, those are the two different corridors. So, um, the study process was, as I explained earlier, we about, they evaluated, FST went out and evaluated the existing site conditions. They walked the trail themselves, they took photos, they attended coordination meetings, and then developed this concept plan. So, this takes you through, this is in much more detail in the feasibility study. It's much easier to read and it can be downloaded from the town website. Number one, map one starts with the Lowell line. And again, the corridor is the orange dotted section. And that comes up by Walmart. Walmart is sort of that white box, if you will, right next to the corridor on the left side. And it crosses Main Street and then runs almost parallel to the Main Street through maps two and three. And then, right at the corner of map four, it comes up behind the edge of the senior center. Okay? And then moves up north of the state hospital and it runs up to Haggots Pond that way. And then it follows through maps six and seven. Six and seven, it comes out by Mitchell G. It crosses Mitchell G. right where the six is. And then out to South Street. And then actually goes all the way to the Wilmington town line in between Prop Mah Farm and the Sutton Brook Super Farm Site. Just to give you a sense. So, um, coordination meetings, we talked about this. We did the community open house. They met with town departments and Kia Butters. We did meet with the state hospital. We met with the cemetery trustees. We met with representatives from Tewksbury Congregational Church, Bank of America. There are others that we tried to reach out to. We couldn't reach with them, so that's an ongoing project. But the folks that we did meet with were outstanding and their comments and concerns and enthusiasms are all included in the study. This is just an example of the kind of data that we collected at the charrette. How people would use the trail. People would use it for walking, jogging, biking. Fewer people would use it for skating. And off the slide here, more people prefer pavement or hard surface versus a soft surface. And that's a cost issue as well, so we wanted to capture that data. So, this plan looked at trail design, parking and access, at-grade crossings, on-road alternatives, and mitigation measures. There is a tremendous level of detail in your feasibility study that we don't need to go into tonight. But, um, as any of you know, they've designed crossings. They've given examples of signage that you would use at certain crossings and so forth. So, quite a level of detail there. So, the proposal would be to create a shared use trail. And this would be a 10-foot paved, uh, surface trail. It would be about one and three-quarter miles. And it would run from Capital Ave to right behind the senior center. Okay? And that parallels Main Street pretty much the whole way and connects it to the center. That, let me move to the next one. You can see the orange line there, it's a little hard to see. And the circle is the senior center. You'd be able to come right up behind there. So, there would be parking at the senior center. And we would explore parking perhaps across from Capital Ave and Main Street. There's a plan to put in a signal at that intersection, so that would be a good place to do now. The other half of the proposal would be to do a greenway trail. Okay? This would be a stone dust trail, a soft surface trail. And this would be primarily on the state hospital lands heading out toward Regina S Drive. So, there would be on-road portions as well, but the state hospital lands would be a soft surface like this. This would, it says, include five potential road crossings running from Maple Street to South Street. One thing that's important to show, which slides, it's not shown properly, is, there we go. Is a trailhead design would be included here at the intersection of Maple and East Street. You can see it in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide, it's circled. The proposal would be to include parking, uh, trailhead area with rules and, um, maps and markings and so forth, where people can access the trail there and they know they would be able to access it there. And it would also, it would connect to existing trails on state hospital lands that most people are, many people are familiar with in town, but aren't formalized. It would also allow folks to access the base circuit trail, which are those yellow lines that are running up and down in the map that many people don't know exist right now. And that could potentially take you also out to Haggots Pond. So, it really opens up a tremendous amount of hiking and walking trails and potential mountain biking trails. It would not be accessible for people with mobility challenges, but that is potentially a goal down the road. It is a much more affordable option to do a greenway here and look into the cost and the fees. Um, this next slide just shows you the portion that runs north to Haggots Pond, right across the middle of the slide there. The greenway section here, if we take it down behind, to connect with Mitchell G. And stay on the trail, the existing abandoned bed, it's very wet, is what we learned from some of the Butters. So, you could potentially put in a boardwalk there. That's the blue line. That is an expensive option. And it goes right through the Mitchell G. neighborhood, which may be a concern for Butters. So, that's one thing that can be done. The purple dotted line shows you an on-road accessible option as well. Okay? And you could put signage in there to make it clear for motorists, but, and safer for cyclists. The trail would then continue across Shawshing Street and the existing trestle. And then on-road down Regina S Drive to South Street. And that, we would propose that that would be the terminus at this point, rather than go close to a super farm site. And that road is actively used also by the farm right now, so we wouldn't anticipate using that. So, estimated construction costs for phase one, which would be the shared use path and the biggest money is $1.1 million. That includes a 25% contingency fee for things that are unanticipated. There is more explanation about these costs in the feasibility study, but that's your bottom line. Phase two A is that trailhead area at Maple and East. That's about $50,000. That includes landscaping and signage. On-road bike route from Maple to Shawshing, $16,000. Phase two C is the 10-foot wide greenway. That would run from Shawshing to Regina S, go across the trestle. Upgrades that, I don't know if that includes upgrades to the bridge, I believe that it does. That's $125,000. Phase two D is the section from Regina S to South. That's on-road, that's signage, things like that, $5,000. And then two E is the on-road bike route trailhead to the senior center. So, that would link effectively the, the greenway to the shared use path. And that would allow folks from both ends of town, kids on bikes, to be able to get to ball fields. Seniors to get to activities in the center of town, the senior center. It also accesses the soccer fields, schools in the center of town. So, there's, and then includes the wind, the rine in the high school, you have accessibility now opening up to the center. So, there's a lot of really good connectivity through all, through the phased plan as you go through.
Do these cost estimates include the, um, the long boardwalk that you just referenced, or do not?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think it does, no. We're just assuming it doesn't.
Yeah, no, it's pretty expensive. But we do have that, we do have that number. I don't have it unfortunately because of the nature of summer vacations and so forth. We couldn't have a number from FST here tonight.
So, if that were preferred alternative, this number obviously is, is low.
Yeah, correct. So, the next, uh, well, okay, so first talking about funding sources. One of the things that they did in our study was identify some sources for funding other than just taxpayers in Tewksbury.
And they talk about, in good detail, the use of community funds such as the CDC, as well as state and local, uh, nonprofit organizations. There's opportunities to get matched out money from transportation enhancement programs, the congestion mitigation air quality improvement program. There are also nonprofit organizations like People for Bikes and Block Boston, which tend to fund some of these kinds of things to varying degrees. Yeah, People for Bikes will go up to $10,000. Safeties School, less than $500,000, but that's a nice number. Field Ponds Foundation, $2,000 to $10,000. New in the Grassroots Environment Fund, $500,000 to $10,000. On down to the Park, uh, Parkin's Acquisition Reservation and Renovations for Communities, $50,000 to $400,000. So, these are opportunities that they know about, that they've used in previous projects with communities to go after funds that are appropriate for, for activities like this.
We think that there may be also more opportunity for funding for greenway, for the greenway trail. It's a little easier to fund. We've started the process with, in order to do anything at the state hospital, you have to work with DECAN. So, we've been, we've already reached out to Representative Vasselli's office. We've met with the leadership over at the state hospital and we're trying to start that process as well to see how that will go forward.
Good luck.
Yeah, I, I, don't laugh. They've been very receptive, actually. Everyone that we've spoken to has been very receptive there. We understand it's a process. We like process. Our next steps include continuing our discussions with the Butters. There's a title search that was approved at town meeting this year. And the information for who can do that title search and working on that contract is with Kyle Boyd right now. And so, they're working on getting that underway. And then at some point, coming back to the town and devising a vote on how, how the funding works, where we want to go. And so, that's an open process. We hope to have a dialogue with the community, with you, and other key boards in town to decide where we want to go.
Relative to the topic of title search, is it your understanding, at least preliminarily, that most of this property is not privately owned now? Or how, do you have to acquire any of the land?
Potentially, yeah. Some of it is, you can get easements across the land. And the, and the big section of the paved, shared use trail, it, we would be looking for easements because it's running sort of right behind a property or across a driveway or something like that. So, there would be work that has to be done there. So, you know, this is sort of where we want to go. This is a direction to work in, but it's very choppy along the ownership is, there are some houses that have been built on the right-of-way, which limits where we can go. That's why it has to end at the senior center, for instance. And there would be a jog around a house on North Street that's built almost across from the, um, sort of a, almost a back exit from Tewksbury Congregational Church, isn't one, but that's where the trail would come through. You have to kind of adjust in a few places.
And just out of curiosity, I know you mentioned your current plan envisions terminating the, the route at South Street. But earlier in your comments, you referenced that it would potentially eventually move all the way to the Wilmington line. Is there, is there something in Wilmington that would connect in to make this a larger, nothing?
No, no.
Yeah, the, the Haggots Pond option is truly viable. I have connections with some of the folks in the Andover. They're bringing that trail down eventually. So, that in terms of connecting our two communities is possible. And on the Wilmington side, it goes off into the woods and it would entail crossing another section of live rail in the use world that, that doesn't have a crossing there, which would make sense, is that, there's less utility in it.
Well, although that said, within the last couple of weeks, Wilmington has started the trail initiative. So, they're starting to look at their, their trail options right now as well. So, there, there might be something there. If you can connect through Wilmington and we can connect, um, further east, there's an opportunity. It opens up a lot more funding sources because it creates this almost a transportation regional piece. Yeah, right.
And just last question I have is off the top of your head, do you know what the total mileage of trails is?
It's about seven miles of active railbed. But what we're talking about would probably be more than that because the hospital internals and the base circuit trails are not counting that.
Very good. So, it's pretty significant.
Yeah.
Other questions. Mr. Panalos?
Yeah, on the topic of connectivity to other trails, the trailhead by the Crosspoint Building in Lowell. At the other end of that, that Lowell part, obviously there's that whole little bit of 495 that you'd have to get either over or under or around somehow. But short of, federal money might make something like that possible. Is there a way to sort of seek the funding with that plan in mind and then therefore make the rest of the project much more feasible?
Yes, is sort of the heart, and Selectman Prattman can probably speak to this better than we could. But if you can connect the trail to a transportation source, for example, the North Belinda Train Station for community purposes, and that would be an on-road option, and you would have to go on-road effectively to get over to the Bruce Freeman Trail. And serious cyclists will go on-road. Families with small children, not so much. But you can, that's one way to pursue. There is a, there is a section of the abandoned railroad bed that goes under, where it comes by Walmart, it actually goes under 38th and it runs right next to the active rail bed. And so, that's a very dangerous proposition. You don't want a rail trail next to an active line. So, we have to separate that, and that's a state project that's beyond what we could do right now. And, oh, the river!
The river is a little bit of a, yeah, it's a, it's a river.
It's more for the extreme.
It's like a portage. Now, there are on-road options that you can get over that, yeah. But you wouldn't go on the rail bed. You'd cut across near Lomaset Park, Pike Street, this section that we just talked about, and you'd cut over that way.
But if we did take the trail all the way to our town, right? There's a section that used to go through Lowell. We can't make Lowell do anything, right? But if we provide maps from our terminus to the Bruce Freeman, as you said, serious cyclists will use that.
Will those maps though, qualify for that connectivity though, then, to access federal funds?
I can't answer that, I'd be ashamed right now. I'm going to ask it. I think it's tenuous.
Have you heard from the Butters, one way or the other, how they feel about this? And what's been your experience with you Butters?
So, at our December meeting, had a number of Butters come out. And our engineers from FST were fantastic in spending time talking to the Butters. There were some Butters who were just, "It's a great idea, I don't want it in my backyard." And we understand that. And there are some that are business owners that have titled to some of that land and they said, "I won't let you come through this section." Which is part of the reason why we would end at Capital Ave. And because it does give us that signaled intersection across Main Street and there's a lot of parking over there. We would need to explore parking options with those business owners. Along Regina S Drive, there were a number of homeowners that came in and talked about it because the trail runs behind their property. You can see that on your maps. We propose an on-road solution, existing public way for that section. And why develop a redundant system and a quiet cul-de-sac kind of street? So, um, those were the key concerns that we heard from Butters. Did you want to comment or do you?
And from what I saw, it was about 1.2, my math was close, 1.3 million if we did all the phases. Without the boardwalk, how long is that boardwalk piece that I mentioned? That's going to be one of the most expensive pieces, but it could connect.
I think FST at 1.7, a longer portion can be several hundred million.
I want to say it was something like $10,000 per 10 feet or 100 feet. It was, it was crazy. If they have the, and I could be, I, that's probably a slight exaggeration, but it is, it's very expensive to build the boardwalks. If you've been over in Concord and done some of the trails there in the National Park, they have those kinds of boards. And you can ride bicycles on them and they're very wide.
Is there a lot of upkeep required?
There is. In fact, the feasibility study has a full maintenance plan in it for the budgets and for TRT and our volunteers down the road for how you would maintain it. That's included in this level of the study, which we've done. We request it and it's excellent to have. But yes, you're correct. I can get that information on the boardwalk back to you as well.
Yeah, I mean, if it's outrageous, that's, you know.
We'll get it to you. Manage expectations.
And to Selectman Panalitis's comment about federal funds, I noticed that a lot of funding sources that they had were more local and state. Are there federal funds available for these types of initiatives that we have looked into yet?
If you connect, if you can show connectivity to other systems, then you open yourself up to that opportunity. It doesn't mean there aren't, it's just more exploration would be needed.
Well, and typically the way you access those funds is through state agencies. So, you, you don't just get, it doesn't come down from, from Washington to Tewksbury. You have to access it through DOT.
Yeah, whereas these grants are more focused on community wellness, recreation activity, moving bicycles.
And this feasibility study was by this town, for this town, right? Some other trails from a get-go or multi-municipality and therefore would be immediately. So, if we go to the edge of town and we talk about connectivity now, that's the most expensive.
Right, the tri-town initiative, for example.
Correct.
Have there been discussions with, you said Wilmington is just starting to look at this, for Lowell. They obviously have the start of the Bruce Freeman. Do they not have an active group that you can start to think about there?
They have kind of patchy areas that have been turned into trails that don't really go anywhere. This section of trail, but isn't leading anywhere. We have not talked with their, have we? We have Lowell. We haven't identified a group in Lowell, like the Bruce Freeman Trail. We've talked to Bill Ricker.
Bill Ricker is underway.
Yeah, Bill Ricker.
Lowell is less organized, seems less interested in that little corner of Lowell in terms of the trail because technically it's that small. We have talked to people in the Andover about the Haggots Pond connection, but that's an interesting left-hand issue.
One other question. Have you had much interaction with Chief Sheen or Officer Welch related to potential public safety issues? Or, you know, from these trails, you're potentially accessing the back of people's problems.
Absolutely. And in point of fact, Officer Welch has been to their traffic, was a member of the traffic committee meeting.
At the end of the month. Yeah, and FST engineers met with Jenny and other members to talk about public safety as an issue with town, please. So, they have addressed that. There is public safety issue. It's addressing here, it's not uncommon for folks when they hear that a rail trail is coming in to be concerned about public safety. They would not be alighted at half, wouldn't be something that people would be accessing at night. It could be police, it'd actually run right behind the police department. So, that would be something that we need to discuss in the future.
So, Chief Sheen will be requisitioning bikes next?
Absolutely.
We're pulling them out of their store.
Yeah, it's another grant opportunity. And one of the advantages we have is so many communities have already done this. That at several forums that we've attended, we get the benefit of the communities that are already underway, how they've addressed their public safety access. One, just a quick example is they put numbers on the trees so that if someone is in distress, they can call the public safety officials, you know, 911 and say, "I'm at tree, where are you? Tree number 43." Terrific. Ambulance can get to them. So, if someone come out of town, they'd know where they are. So, there are just extremely simple, but terrifically important benefits we can get from one area of communities.
The paved, the shared use path would be wide enough for emergency vehicles to access. There would be barriers to prevent actual cars from going in there, but the public safety would be able to access it as well as in depending on national bridge trucks. Because there would be, you'd have to work with national bridge to access a section of this trail as well. But they're being cooperative with other trails, so.
Have you, to that point, and I know it's not lighted path, so it's a certain period of time that people are going to use this. Have you heard of other communities dealing with issues, crime issues?
There's usually a concern, but it doesn't, it doesn't get borne out. So, for example, the Cape Cod Rail Trail is a very well-used path. It's a very active path. People use the trails all the time. So, it's not a lot of opportunity for funding business to happen.
No, most of the, most of the issues come around things like managing pathways, managing, you know, stewardship of, of the space versus it's a dusk-to-dawn type of a culture.
Okay, so I just have one other question more for the town manager because it's interesting and I appreciate a number of times you've made some positive comments about Fay Swafford. So, I'm just curious, have we worked with them on other projects in the past? I'm familiar with the company. And when we do all these different projects that we are working with firms such as theirs, do we evaluate like a post-mortem kind of assessment of the quality of their work? And down the road, if, if the work that they're doing on this project is solid and we have some choice, do we, we give some weight to that kind of experience?
Yeah, we do. We've done that before. It just depends on what, just in terms of their use. For a real sewer project, it's tough to, use this project in, in weight, say, with sewer divisions. We brought back architects, that would use, it was pretty straightforward. We want to distribute ourselves, so we do.
It's hard to find a good business partner.
Incredibly responsive and we were all so fortunate that one of the engineers actually grew up in the community. So, there was a fantastic understanding of the community already.
Got you. That doesn't hurt either.
I can speak this, because FST has done a number of bike trails for NASTIOT. They've been involved in a number of these projects. And they have a very good reputation for doing these type of jobs. They've done it all through the state, like they mentioned, down the Cape. To the additional add-on in Lexington and a number of other areas. And once again, we've done a number of these things through the state. And this is one of the initiatives that was going on to make bicycle foundations for, you know, once again, green energy, those type of things. And so, I'm very happy that you are starting on the Lowell tile line. That's the first phase that going that way because I have heard rumblings that there is something in the works that it's a tri-town kind of project that they're putting on that is going from Bedford, Bill Ricker, Wilmington. And so, they're looking for a crossing going over Route 3 to come into Wilmington. And then, once again, if this was able to tie it together, there would be federal funds and they'd be looking to partner with you. So, that's something that could be done down the line. So, if you're starting on one pod as they're working through their, their process and then you're coming in, maybe it's something that could be partnered. And once again, if these things go past transportation-related areas, then if you get vehicles off the road and people are able to use this to get to train stations, different locations, the funding does become available. And once again, I've heard all the, I've been to a number of these meetings at cities and towns where there's the initial fear of these type of things where they're going in their backyards. But once again, when they tend to be built, it also cleans the overgrowth. You got, right now you have abandoned rail trail. Honestly, anybody could walk along that area. And once you cut back the overgrowth, they can clean the area up. All of these trail, a lot of the train stations tend to parallel the main roads. Because once again, they go, so it's the same thing as somebody walking down Main Street. It's almost going in the back of where it is because they tend to follow the same path. Route 28 was the main highway. Route 28 was the main highway going up to New Hampshire not too many years ago. And then you get 93, that type of thing. And that's, that's how they tend to build these things as they're going up. So when they put 38 and everything else, it, it tend to paddle out the trains as they're going through. Um, and once they get cleaned up and you tend, the only things that I've heard a lot of this is graffiti, those type of things where you have kids up there painting on the walls and those type of things. You don't really have the big crime.